All right, it looks like we're close to 5:30. We want to welcome everybody this evening. This is a regular board meeting for the Rockcastle County Board of Education. And it's always great to see visitors here. We really love seeing our kids that get to come and show off all of their gifts and talents. And parents, we know that it's because of you that they're here. So, thank you. Thank you for taking time out of your busy lives to share your children with us. The first thing on the agenda is to call the meeting to order, and we start out with a moment of silent prayer. Let the minutes note that all members of the board are present. Item 1C is reading the board team commitments. Matt?
I feel sad, we don't have a memorization yet.
By next meeting, we expect better from you, okay?
To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockcastle County Schools commits to: Review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements; continuously define and work toward long-term goals that serve all students of the district; make each decision based on facts and the best for all students; listen to each other and speak freely; work together, support each other, and not surprise one another; discuss board deliberations to point a mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information; support the majority's decision projecting board unity toward shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning; operate without personal or political agendas; respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully; delegate implementation to superintendent and education team; and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments.
Item 2 is adopt the agenda. Is there any questions, need any changes? If not, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Item 3, this is the fun part of the night. It's our school and our community showcase. And the first thing is, we want to recognize our district elementary academic team recognition. So if the coaches are here, first of all, let's get our coaches up here. Come on, guys. Listen, I did not realize until witnessing this firsthand this year, how much hard work these teachers put into their students. And I just think that, you know, the only thing you're getting from us is a round of applause. But, we would like for all district, all of the children in the district that placed from Broadhead, Roundstone, Mount Vernon, for any category, if you placed in that category, if you all will come forward, we want to recognize all of you all. There are different areas. There's math, science, language arts, arts and humanities, and composition. And guys, I just want you to know, which most of your parents have got to listen to these, these kids get asked questions that I have absolutely never heard of this before.
I know.
And did you agree, Angie? I mean, it just completely blow my mind. But, guys, we are very, very proud of you all. And if you all will get in together, we want to get a picture of you, put on our website. We're all Rockettes. Our region, the school that went to our region to represent us was Mount Vernon Elementary. And we had some students who placed in the region also. But one of the students that placed in the region actually came from Broadhead, I believe I'm telling the right school, I'm mistaken. So if you placed in the region in a competition, we want you to come up and get recognized also. It's you, Rodley. Come on, smart cookie. He's a smart cookie buddy. Once again, we're so proud of all these kids. And, listen, it's tough. The questions are very, very tough. And I just commend the teachers, because I know that the stopping you get is just loving your kids. And we appreciate you, and we appreciate all your time you give for our students. So, thank you all, once again. The next thing on our agenda is our district spelling bee recognitions. And I'd like to ask Ms. Starla to come up and do that.
You guys so much for recognizing these guys and the hard work. Ms. Angie and I, we were really, really kind of nervous with how we were doing the spelling bee this year, because it was, we were serving a much grander group of students than ever before. And we really wanted to open that up and allow that to be like a district-wide enrichment project. And so every student, third grade through eighth grade, was able to participate in this year's spelling bee. And there were a lot, we had a lot of help along the way. And, you know, there was a lot of planning upfront that we had to go through. But if it weren't for the people who helped us get that together, it wouldn't have been as successful as it was. And I'd like to thank them real quick, if that's okay? So, our third through eighth grade teachers at every school had the very first initial spelling bees in their classroom. And so if it weren't for their help, we wouldn't have been able to have all of the students participate. That did. Mr. Bustle, he opened up his school and his auditorium so that we could have it at his facility. Mr. Ken Hopkins, he organized all the transportation to make sure that all of the students could get there and back. And so that was a big deal. He, along with Mr. Poppy, also drove, Anthony Poppy drove the school buses, which was a big help. We had a number of chaperones who helped us. Ms. Angie King, Ms. Sandy Brown, Ms. Melinda Osborne, and Ms. Nicole Ear, they all helped in making sure that the kids got to school, got to the competition and back. All of the gear-up ladies and Mr. Jesse Mahathy, they were there to help clean up afterwards when picked up the pizza. The janitors at the high school, they helped us with setting up the stage and making sure that everything went smoothly. Mr. Brandon Reynolds, he livestreamed the whole event so that everybody could watch it. A lot of teachers ended up watching it in their classrooms. And then John Kelly, also known as JP Kelly, he helped get the sound set up so that you could hear it clearly while it was being broadcast. Mr. Herbie Brock and his Xander Ising leadership team, they were able to help with that. And they directed the parents to the auditorium. They handed out programs, they helped organize the contestants, and they were also judges. So they were a big help. Ms. Jennifer Mattingly, she was a presenter and pretty much ran the show for us. Mr. Thomas Coffee, he presented our awards and made it a special day for them. Ms. David Alexander printed the programs that we made. Ms. Jenny Sweet, Ms. Mary Ann Childrens, they got the money together to pay for all of the awards and the pizza. The Broadhead Fire Department and the community welcomed the winners back to school, which was an awesome thing that one of those kids will never forget. Our gate leadership team, they went and helped organize the contestants as they got on and off the stage. And none of this could have been possible without the parents who pushed their kids every day to succeed academically and to participate in academic competition like the spelling bee. And then the Mount Vernon Signal and my gate news crew, they highlighted those students to make sure that the school was able to celebrate them. So, none of it would have been possible without all of those people. And that's why it was a success, because in Rockcastle County, we all worked together. And so if it weren't for them, it would have been hard for us to pull off what we pulled off. So, thank you to all those people. Now, we need to celebrate our winners. So, our first place middle school winner, from Rockcastle County Middle School, sixth grader, Voyager's Team, James Perkins. And then our first place elementary school winner, from Broadhead Elementary School, fifth grade, Ms. Beth Jones's class, Aleah Caldwell. And she's here with her mom, Sarah Caldwell, and her brothers and sisters.
Thank you guys so much for giving us opportunity to celebrate these kids. And it was a big deal. I mean, it was, I think that I would have had a hard time getting up on that stage in front of all those people and spelling some of those words. And they were, there were some difficult ones, and they just were awesome. So, thank you.
I was able to come and watch it. And some of those words, I was like Googling and trying to figure out if it was even a word.
Yeah, it was tough.
She had a really tough word, something I had never heard of before. And I was like, oh my goodness.
There were some tough words, but they did great. And I was so proud and impressed. And they did awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Starla, for all of your work. And I'm sure vision that this would not have happened. So, thank you, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you. And the hot safe, because I believe that you have a presentation for gifted and family.
I do. And so I'd like to invite some of the kids that come help clean, like with Aggie Hawkins, with Callie Thacker, and with Luke Willis. And so these guys were really our worker behind this project. It started out as a recruitment video for Mr. Phil...
Phillips.
Phillips, Mr. Phillips. Sorry, Mr. Phillips. But anyways, it started out as a recruitment video for him. And he got his recruitment video...
February, right? When did he get February?
That video was like two minutes long. And it didn't highlight all the material that these guys collected. And so it became kind of a passion project that evolved into something much grander than a recruitment video. And so what we found while we were going through all of the schools, is that there are some amazing things happening in Rockcastle County. And I don't think that those things are always seen. I work at every school, just about. I'm at every building almost every week. And I didn't know all of the amazing things that were happening. And sometimes our society focuses on the negative, but man, there's a lot of good things happening in our school district. And so those are things that we noticed. When we were leaving, we would always have conversations about how awesome our school district is, and the people, and all the things that they have going on. And so this video, which was a two-minute video for you, is a 12-minute video, highlighted all the amazing things that Rockcastle County Schools has in common. So, we hope that you guys enjoy it. And we were just really proud of our school district, and I hope that this shows that. You guys want to add anything to that?
I just want to say, I really enjoy this project. And I want to say thank you, Ms. Starla, for putting it all together and just making it happen.
Towards the end, there's a section where the school buses are leaving. And I was adding this idea, she wanted to make sure that the bus drivers...
Daddy proud.
Rockcastle County Schools is great is because of the kids that we have in our school system.
We put our students first. We love our kids.
Make our school great.
And our students. We have the best students in the state.
Rockcastle County Schools is great is that we put our students first, and we love all of our kids.
And we have the best students in the world.
The kids, the kids make Rockcastle County Schools great.
It's that every day, the students walk in all of our schools across Rockcastle County that I think students feel genuine love, and they know that every adult that they are dedicated and doing everything they can to help them succeed.
The people absolutely make Rockcastle County Schools great. Our students, our teachers, our certified and classified staff, all of us working together as a team to develop Rocket learners to Rocket leaders is what makes our schools great.
Who should I want to have?
I think the most important quality that a Rocket should have is perseverance. They should always keep trying, they're not going to get things on the first try, to always just keep working until they do this.
I think a Rocket should be determined, hardworking, and just never give up.
I think a Rocket needs to be able to persevere, and to be relentless in their striving for greatness.
A Rocket possesses strong work ethic, and they also have passion for whatever they are striving to accomplish.
A good Rocket is someone who is willing to learn, has a good attitude, a good work ethic, and just tries to be positive, and wants to learn, and wants to be a better person.
Rockets should be a good listener, should be ready to learn, be accepting of others.
Good, great Rocket is a good leader.
Being a leader, setting the example.
I really like how our Rocket is a strong leader.
Rocket shows the core instincts of Rocket's character.
They give back to their community, and we think about students as a whole.
Rocket learners are leaders in every way.
What does Rockcastle County School say?
I think staff makes it great. Staff...
Best grade teachers and greatest teachers.
There's a lot of things that make Rockcastle County Schools great, but I think one of the greatest things about Rockcastle County Schools is that everybody, every person in Rockcastle County school system, including our teachers and staff here at the Area Technology Center, value each and every kid, each and every student, every member of them.
I think one of the things that makes our school system a great school system is that we have really good teachers, great teachers actually, who care about students, that go above and beyond. And I think that is something from the top down, from Dr. Ballinger, all the way down to our bus drivers, our custodians, our cafeteria ladies, instructional assistants, everybody works together to do what's best for kids.
Obviously, the teachers and the staff. We have great teachers, great staff members, that's bus drivers, cooks, custodians, teachers, and assistants. We truly have a staff here in Rockcastle County that really care about their kids and their well-being, all the people here. Everyone, from office staff to the lunchroom, cafeteria ladies, to the bus drivers, I think everyone cares a lot about students.
We are.
We are.
We are.
Are.
We are.
We are.
This is...
We are.
Are.
We 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 are.
Rocking!
So great. Scarlet, I don't know that I've smiled that much in three days. Yeah, thankfully, that was really great. Our students, wow. Great work. Great job, guys. I think that that's something that everybody in that community needs to see that. It needs to be shared on every social media platform there is, because that is what we're all about. It was amazing. You guys are rock stars. Thank you. Man, that was just so good. I could watch it, you all want to watch it again. Yes, it was wonderful. But I know we've got something else great coming up. So, this is our school showcase, Ms. Willis, Ms. Jessica, would you like to come and tell us what's going to be...
I'm not the one talking, I have to talk about it. So, I have tonight, instead of talking, I have got our musical group with us, under the direction of Cassie Smith and Carrie Burdette. They are going to do a short little snippet from their Willie Walker production that they just did. And I don't know if you had a chance to watch it before the break, but it was phenomenal. And they have worked so hard, they've had so many practices after school, but it is fantastic. So, I'm going to try it over to...
Trust me, I'm a wonkerver.
Oh, yeah.
With the conquer. Sprinkle it with dew, covered in chocolate and a miracle or two, the candy man. You can take a ready... Side, soaking in the sun and make a strawberry lemon pie, the candy man.
The candy man. The candy man. The candy man can.
The candy man can, 'cause he makes it with love and makes the world taste good.
The candy man makes everything. You can even eat the dishes.
Nothing for you, Charlie?
Not today. I don't want to spoil my appetite.
Looks like your appetite could use a little spoiling. Here, take one of these on the house.
Really? Hey!
Hey.
You can take a.
Oh, the devil, man.
Separate the sorrow and collect up all the cream, the candy man.
The candy man.
The candy man can.
The man can.
The candy man can, 'cause he makes his it. Taste good. Taste good, 'cause the candy man thinks it's true.
So one, well, simply imagine how good the whole show was. And I think this is going to be the entire student body twice right before the break, and you know how nervous I am to perform in front of your peers, but they did. I am, I say, God, they were putting me more proud.
Amazing.
Come on, Willie, get in the middle. Yeah, Willie, yeah, Willie, come on, get in the middle, Willie.
I'm not paying to be paid money one day to see some of your wrong problems.
Get him his cake. I don't know how I'm supposed to do that. We have extras. We have a few extras.
Good job, guys. Thank you all. I can see why you're so proud of them. They're great. And Ms. Jessica, you'd said something you didn't want to follow the video. Well, ain't nobody gonna want to follow this either. Parents, yes, your kids are just amazing. I mean, you've heard us say that, and it just makes, when we see this, it just makes the world seem like it's right. And so thank you for sharing them with us tonight, and you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We would love for you to, but it gets boring from here on out. So if you feel the need to leave, you can. We will not judge you for it whatsoever, I promise.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
No matter who comes.
I always stuff.
It's no one to be proud of.
Listen, I started reading that one. Yeah, I thought it was a very touching thing that was written on our page.
Bye, Riley. Thank you all.
Thank you for being here.
Now she's gone.
Now, back to the board. Listen, that was, I know that the ones that are left, I know that you deal with lots of stress every day, and for all of those headaches and stressful days, that is the result of why you do what you do. Wow, how impressive. You all must feel down, prideful. It's almost a matter of pride down deep inside. Wow. Item four on our agenda is operations and actions. I personally did not have any questions about any of those. Did anyone else?
Midway University, that's just a standard, basically, student teaching agreement.
It's a second one, and they, those come to us different times throughout the year, and this is just our time to remain with Midway.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Item five A is review and approve the monthly financial reports. This is Ms. Jenny. If anyone has any questions for her concerning anything that they've seen, she's always available for phone calls. She hadn't talked to me today, so.
Moving right along, posting the review. Things are right in line, which is good.
Anybody need any questions for Ms. Jenny? If not, we'll need a motion to approve.
Second.
Second?
Yep.
Item five B, review and approve the Save the Children math coordinator positions at all three elementary schools.
Yes, so our Save the Children contract is expanding, and that's something that definitely worth celebrating for the district. We currently have our reading intervention programs at each of our elementary schools, and Save the Children is now offering a math program coordinator at each elementary school that's completely funded through Save the Children, so there's no expense from the general fund for us for these positions, so we would like approval to move forward and be able to post those.
Well, I do have a question. Is it a year-to-year basis for the monies for that, or is it, I mean, they've never really said, I mean...
There's no end date.
There's, okay.
That they can miss.
All right. So you want to have any questions?
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Wonderful. Item five C, review and approve the resolution authorizing litigation against social media companies.
So this is something that I want to read directly for you, just so that there's an understanding of what this is about. All of us know that our youth are in a mental health crisis, not only in Rockcastle County, not only in the state of Kentucky, but in our nation. Lots and lots of studies behind the effects that social media has had on our youth, and that's anywhere from TikTok to Facebook to Instagram to Snapchat. And everyone in this room sees that daily, the impact that's having on our youth. This is a class action lawsuit. This involves not only school districts in the state of Kentucky, but school districts across the nation in a class action lawsuit against these social media giants and the impact that they're having on our kids. And I think it's time that, as not only a school district, but as a community and as parents, that we stand up to the impact that we know. All of us, everyone in this room knows that these social media giants are targeting our students and targeting our kids, and it's time that we stand up and say enough is enough. There's algorithms written that target kids, that target youth, that lead to addiction of social media, and this is Rockcastle County Schools standing up and saying, we see the impact, we are recognizing the impact, and we are against this. I would like to read from a letter, some statistics that goes along with this, but "Students around the country are struggling with anxiety, depression, thoughts of self-harm, and suicidal ideation. The U.S. Surgeon General last year is recognizing that the youth mental health crisis is in not only this community, but in all communities in our nation. According to the Surgeon General, one in five children ages three to seventeen now suffer from a mental health disorder. From 2009 to 2019, the rate of high school students who reported persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness increased by forty percent, one out of every three kids. In 2007 to 2019, suicide rates among youth ages ten to twenty-four in the United States increased by fifty-seven percent. By 2018, suicide was the second-leading cause of death for youth ages ten to twenty-four. From 2007 to 2016, emergency room visits for youth ages five to seventeen rose one hundred and seventeen percent for anxiety disorders, forty-four percent for mood disorders, and forty percent for attention disorders. So more than ninety percent of today's youth use social media. We want to be able to say that we're against this, and so I'm asking for the board to support Rockcastle County Schools in joining this class action lawsuit to say enough is enough and that we want to protect the kids.
Ms. Carrie, if you don't mind, will you just, for anyone that may be watching on any social media platform, will you just explain that this is a no cost to the district, so that will be known?
Um, so in our next approval, we're going to actually be approving the resolution, and within that, and within that contract, it doesn't cost the district any money. There's no taxpayer money being used towards us being a part of this class action lawsuit. If there is a payout within this, then the attorneys would then receive their funding or their fees out of the payout. So no money upfront, no fees upfront.
No tax dollars spent.
No tax dollars spent, no.
Any questions? With that being said, would like a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Review and approve the contingency fee contract with Hendy, Johnson, Vaughn, Emery, PSC, and Rockcastle County Schools.
Yes, so for these professional services, as just was mentioned, Rockcastle County Schools would agree to pay thirty-three point three percent of a fee based upon the amount of money which is received if there is any settlement. If there is no settlement, then there's no money spent by our district.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Item five E, review and approve the statement of engagement, terms, and billing practices for Board Attorney Theresa T. Combs of Fowlerville.
This was uploaded in your board documents. This is just to continue, a continuation of our contract with Theresa Combs as our board attorney. With this continuation, she is asking for an increase of ten dollars an hour on her services, and we do not currently pay a retainer fee for her. It's just that she bills us based on the amount of time she spends on providing services.
Which is wonderful. I called, I think, it was today when I talked to Jenny about the retainer, and that's probably unheard of most board attorneys.
Ms. Ballinger, I assume based on past conversations, we're pleased with her work and response and all those sorts of things.
I'm very pleased with her. She's very knowledgeable. She's always there. She's, I talk to her multiple times a week. You know, if we have questions, special education, I know that Ms. Rebecca talks with her very often. She's always very responsive, returns phone calls, returns texts immediately, emails, can't stop to her. We we all have access to her upon as we need, and we've been very pleased with her.
She's known also to do school business.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's what she does, so.
She's very well respected among the state, and if I'm anywhere, and you know, that's a common question, who's your board attorney? When I say Theresa Combs, they're like, oh, well, you know, she's very well respected.
Well, it seems to me that she is, there's extra an hour or something, which is, for sure. Which we're very happy that she only answered. You know, we're not complaining. With that being said, motion to approve? All in favor?
Yes.
All right.
Item five F, review and approve the authorization for Codell to advertise for bids for the RCMS renovation per the bid schedule presented at the March board meeting.
They were here at the last, at our last meeting in March, and they presented the schedule, and they just need approval for us to move forward based on that schedule.
Any questions?
Motion.
Need a second? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay. Item five G, executive session to discuss the possible sale or purchase of specific property. The motion is, I move that we enter into an executive session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight one O one B to discuss the possible sale or purchase of specific property because public discussion would likely affect the value of the property.
So moved.
Second.
So we're going to go into closed session for just a short spell, and I guess we got to go back in our little corner room.
Item seven is department reports. We have all of those. If anyone, do any of you have anything that you would like to share? I'm not trying to cut the meeting short, but if you, we will let you talk. Ms. Fubert, would you like, she's always so quiet. Thank you all for all your hard work. We appreciate you. Item eight, Ms. Carey, superintendent communication.
I would just like to remind you all that you're invited Thursday night to participate. We will be having at five thirty to seven here in this, this room. We will be having a community roundtable discussion. We've invited different community agencies, including some students and also some school employee representation, our administrators, just to discuss the mental health crisis that we're seeing with our students. And again, it's a state and nationwide issue, but we also want to hear back from our community. We have representation from the hospital, the health department, EMS, law enforcement, all of our stakeholders that we work with daily to make sure we're meeting the needs of our kids. We just want to get their input. So we will have some roundtable discussions.
Item nine is board comments. I'll always start on that end. Anna, if you have anything.
Just thank you all.
No, same thing. Thanks. Especially we've had a rough couple of weeks. So it's been tough and thanks for everything you do.
I do have a couple. I want to say publicly thank all of you all in this room, but also our folks across the district who stepped up in the crisis, crises over the last few weeks. And also our community folks who've come in, our faith-based folks and different people, our outside trauma teams. I just can't imagine what all of you all have dealt with on that front and we appreciate it. And I just wanted to add to the social media discussion. If there's any parents watching, you know, at the end of the day, we can, we can have a class action lawsuit and we can win a million dollars. But at the end of the day, it's parents and we've got, we as parents, and I'm putting it myself, have got to watch what our kids are doing online. We've got to monitor it. And, and we've got to step up and be parents about it. And, and fifth graders don't need, fifth graders probably don't need cell phones, but they don't need TikTok. They don't need Instagram. And we've got to be mindful of that as parents. And the number one thing we can do is watch what our kids are doing and be mindful of it. And so I'm sure there's lots of parents watching at the end of the meeting, but I just want to say that out loud and anybody that's listening, that's the thing that we can, can all do right now today. We can start that today.
Thing I would have is I just want to thank everyone. I think that just like the little video, we are Rock Nation. And when one hurts, we all hurt. And when one rejoices, we all rejoice. And that's what it's supposed to be. I appreciate all of you all, all of your hard work. And Ms. Carey, I really appreciate you and thank you for taking my crazy phone calls. Ms. Jenny, thank you for taking my crazy phone calls. I think this next month I'm going to focus on calling Marcus. With that being said, I hope everyone has a great evening and I need a motion for us to adjourn.
Someone.
Thank you all.